And to the task to make this institution do what it's designed to do, and that is to communicate, to build lives and give focus. Thank you for leadership. Thank you for the student body. And thank you, Father, for this moment that we have. Give us wisdom as we make decisions. I pray in Christ's name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America, considered a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please follow me in honor of the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Reminds you that this meeting is being recorded. First item of business is to consider minutes of two regularly scheduled board meetings. The first is was held August 22nd. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The second one is the regular scheduled board meeting of September 26th. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Opportunity for members of the public to speak to the board at this time. Is there someone who wishes to take advantage of that opportunity? Seeing none, hearing none, we move to the chancellor's report.
Good afternoon. Just wanted to announce that or share that the annual Thanksgiving meal for faculty and staff is scheduled for Tuesday, November 14th. You have a flyer there at each of your seats. We will have the executive dining room open as well, so you have your choice. Also, the following week is Thanksgiving weekend, so faculty and staff will be off November 20th through the 24th for the holiday.
Video time.
Next, we have a picture. We have a picture of the man, Dean DeLeon.
Good afternoon, distinguished board members, Dr. Carter and guests. On Tuesday, October 10th, CTC hosted the Kubota Central Southern Service Managers Meeting. Attendees had a jam-packed agenda, starting at 8:30 in the morning and ending at 5:00 that afternoon. The picture shown here represents the Kubota Service Managers engaged in a question and answer session with our illustrious Mr. Bill Kirchner, Department Chair of Industrial Technology, during a tour of our CTC diesel labs that afternoon. Students enrolled in our AAS diesel program, graduate with eight Kubota Technician certifications that are embedded in the curricula, including product delivery inspection and assembly, preventative maintenance inspection, maintenance procedures, engine, electrical, brake, steering suspension, hydraulics, and powertrain. Currently, CTC is in conversation with Kubota to implement a 14-week Kubota Technician Program, designed to train students on the processes and procedures of repairing Kubota vehicles. Completers will earn the eight aforementioned certifications. I would like to give a special thanks to Mr. Kirchner, who coordinated and served as host for CTC that day. And I think it was a very fruitful event. A lot of good questions, a lot of good commentary. And again, thank you, sir, for putting it together. Appreciate it.
Thank you both. Questions? Anybody? Thank you.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Gordon, you have the September interim financial statement investment report.
So you have in front of you the September statements. One of the things that you pointed out on this first page is that these balances roll forward from year to year. So since we're still working on that middle column, if we have to change until we all get completed, it's going to affect your 930. So getting pretty close, but I just wanted you to know that if we made a change at 831, it's going to affect your 930 this month. So there's a little more terminology, line items this year that have to do with the software that's related to the government accounting rules. On the second page, September looks pretty good. We received our first state appropriations check for 789, and you're seeing 1/6 of that. We'll get three payments this year. And then on the third page, the thing that jumped out at me the most for sure at campus, not down to any other. And then rates are staying pretty stable. We just made investment last week at 5.89, so.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the report?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Gaines, you have two reports for us.
Good afternoon, Chancellor Carter, members of the board. Today, the administration recommends approval for CTC to enter into an interlocal agreement with the Texas Department's Information and Resources. Basically, this just allows us to join their shared services program, which will be very beneficial to us. The actual designation of the agreement is DIR-SS-ILC0649, just in case you need to know that. Happy to answer any questions?
Questions? Is there a motion to approve this recommendation?
Yes.
Question. Can you explain the benefits?
Well, Texas DIR, what they do in a lot of ways is they acquire these services themselves. They join with larger businesses, and they sort of handle the monetary aspect of it. So for instance, what we're specifically looking to do is gather some security services from AT&amp;T. And we were already talking with them about that. And normally, you don't have to enter into this formal agreement with them to get things of that nature, but I think they've made some sort of change recently. So anyway, it's a more formalized program. And so we just need to join this to, you know, gain access to a variety of those kinds of services.
Okay. Thank you, Aaron. Anybody else? Any question? Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Thank you. You have the second item.
The second item is the administration recommends approval for CTC to purchase a new IBM TS 4500 tape library. That would be purchased through ConvergeOne via Texas DIR contract at a cost of $145,500. The reason for that is what we discussed last week at the workshop. So I'm happy to answer any questions on that if you have them. Happy to elaborate.
What's the shelf life of this particular version?
We got 20 years out of the previous one, which I wouldn't expect that, but 15 is reasonable. And this is mostly a mechanical device that houses more hardcore computing.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else? Is there a motion to approve this recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Gonzalez, I believe you're going to give us the presentation for... Oh, there's it. That's Mr. Sonnavon. He disappeared. You were hiding.
He's here.
No? No?
He's here.
Ready?
Wow.
You were blocked out. I thought maybe you were taking leave today.
Little stealth situation. Good afternoon, Sherman Towers, CTC Board of Trustees, and Chancellor Carter. In accordance with Board of Trustees Document 427, the Director of Government Community Relations in conjunction with the Sponsorship Committee is responsible for allocating funds for sponsorship requests from charitable organizations under the board policy. This current fiscal year's sponsorship total budget is $74,300. CTC, the CTC administration recommends sponsorship awards to the following organizations: The Business Research Center for $30,000, the CTC Foundation, Purse Bingo Golf Tournament Lighten of the Bell Tower in Bold and Extravagant Center for $12,500, the Festival of Trees Sponsored with Table for $2,800, the Harker Heights Chamber Chairman Circle for $2,500, the Colleen Rotary Scholarships for $3,500, the Colleen National Association of the Advancement of Color People, $2,600, Advent Health Gold Star Gala, $2,500, for a total of $56,400. By sponsoring these events, Central Texas College increases exposure through the event, event advertising, and media coverage, fostering trust and credibility that leads to new students and partnerships. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve this recommendation? So moved. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Thank you. Thank you, Aaron.
Good afternoon. As we discussed at the board workshop, the invitation for bid was issued for various building products that are used through facilities and construction. Reproposals were received from various vendors. From those vendors, pricing was submitted by line item and evaluated by section. Based upon that evaluation, Heights Lumber and Supply from Harker Heights was selected for the purchase of all buildings, grounds, construction-related products, except for a few items: table legs, dry erase whiteboards, batteries, and flat steel. 180 Office Solutions LLC from Georgetown was selected for the purchase of the flip-top tables, table legs, and dry erase whiteboards. Batteries will just be purchased locally from local vendors, and then flat steel will be purchased utilizing a purchasing cooperative as needed. There'll be, there are two separate recommendations, but both of the contracts would have an initial term of 12 months with four one-year renewal options. The first one that administration recommends is for the purchase of facilities and construction-related products through Heights Lumber and Supply, and a amount to exceed $250,000 annually or 1.25 over the life of the contract. And then you can see the terms of the initial term would be November 1st through October 31st.
So would you like to present both those as a package? Can you do that?
I can. The second one would be an award to 180 Office Solutions LLC for the...
It would be better to split them. Unless anybody has objection, but it would be better to split them.
Under advice of counsel, we'll vote on one at a time. Go ahead. All right, for the first one. Item nine. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Thank you. All right, item 10. Go ahead and finish.
The second one would be for 180 Office Solutions. It would be in an amount not to exceed $50,000 annually or $250,000 over the life of the contract. And this would be for various products that would specifically include the flip-top table legs and the dry erase whiteboards.
Is there a motion to approve this recommendation? Motion's been made and seconded. Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Item 11. Dr. Carter?
Last week, we talked briefly about the board's options to make a recommendation to nominate someone for the Tax Appraisal District of Bell County. And I believe I'll turn it over to Mr. Wilkinson at this time. He made a recommendation.
Carter?
Yes, ma'am. I recommend Arthur Bryan for the position to that board. He's, you know, he served the community, served the military, also was the band director out at...
Shoemaker.
Shoemaker House.
His bio.
But he's been an active member in the community and served the community. Owns his home here. Great member.
Any questions about that nomination?
I read his bio. What do you think qualifies him to be on the Tax Appraisal Board? I'm not objecting. I'm just curious.
Well, the curious is that he's taxpayer in Bell County. He's served here. He's been in the community for a long period of time, and also knows financially about taxes. And that also helps.
And we're presenting him for a nomination. No, it's up to...
It's a nomination, correct.
Any other, any questions anybody has about that motion?
I'll second the motion.
All right, motion to nominate Mr. Bryan for the Tax Appraisal Board. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. Thank you. Thank you, Aaron. Next item on the list is item 12, which is continuation of this board's self-evaluation meeting with Dr. Garrett. We'll go into executive session at 117 and report back to you at that appropriate time. We'll go into executive session at 1:17 and report back to you at that appropriate time. We had an executive session and there's no action to be reported. Remind you that the.
What are they doing?
Oh, time is now.
One job, sir.
It's, it was when I started talking, it was at 2:44. Thank you for keeping me reminded. I even wrote myself a note.
1:40.
1:44, thank you. I can't read or watch it. Where was it? Reminder of announcement of meetings, next meetings. Board workshop for Tuesday, November 14th. And then the board meeting. That's lunch, lunch day. And that workshop for the board meeting, which will skip a week and be November 28th because the campus is closed during between the two. Any other questions or discussion for the board? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second? All in favor, stand. Just can't quite be perfect, can you?